I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now is a moment of silence, please. I'd like you all to consider, and if you're going to pray, please pray for those who have been affected by the COVID virus, either those that have died or those that have been damaged by it. Thank you. Since we're past 10 o'clock, I thought we'd start with the 10:00 AM time certan, the proclamation recognizing Diana Wimpel on her retirement from Lassen County.
Mr. Chairman, we haven't approved the agenda yet, and I have a request to amend the agenda.
Yes, we can certainly move to actually follow the agenda. So I'm looking for approval and addition of agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting that the board add an urgency item to the agenda relating to county office hours. In order to do that, and there's a resolution that Tony's passing out, in order to do so, the board needs to make a couple of findings. One is that there is a need to take immediate action, and the second is that the need for action came to the attention of the county subsequent to the agenda being posted.
Do we make that, so we may add it to the agenda, so we need to make that finding? Both those findings?
If one of the members was willing to make a motion making those findings and adding it to the agenda, I think that would be appropriate.
So I'm sure I'll make that motion. There we go.
Oh, it's next.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
The vote needs to be forked, but if it's unanimous, I think that's going to qualify.
We could go ahead and do the roll call. I like those anyway. Shell?
Supervisor Gallagher?
Yes.
Supervisor Union?
Aye.
Supervisor Hermit?
Aye.
Supervisor Alma?
Aye.
Supervisor Teeter?
Yes.
All right, so that is added to the agenda. Do we then have to pass the agenda, or is that all? We would have to pass the agenda.
I think it would be appropriate to approve the agenda.
So I'm entertaining a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Since we're going to follow the agenda, why don't we go ahead and move to public comment then? Do I have anybody here that wishes to speak in public comment? All right, so now, if it's all right with everybody, we shall move on to the 10:00 AM time certan and proclamation. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, I suppose, and then we'll hand it over. Proclamation in honor of Diana Wimpel on her retirement as Lassen County Auditor/Controller. Whereas Diana Wimpel began her career with Lassen County Health and Social Services on December 26, 2002 as an administrative manager. The position was reclassified the Chief Fiscal Manager on November 15, 2004. She promoted to Assistant Auditor on November 19, 2007, ran and was elected as Lassen County Auditor/Controller on June 3, 2014, and again on June 5, 2018. Position she held until her retirement on March 31, 2020. And whereas Diana Wimpel as Chief Fiscal Manager for Health and Social Services was responsible for the preparation, oversight, implementation of the agency budget, funding, and contract administration. As Assistant Auditor, Diana was responsible for assisting the auditor with the budget process, general ledger, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, property tax, preparing financial statements and monitoring all departmental budgets, and tracking contract and grant revenues. And whereas Diana Wimpel as the Auditor/Controller was responsible for establishing the accounting policies and procedures for the county, budget control, mandatory audits with the special district, recording receipts of revenues, payroll, fixed assets, property tax, accounts receivable, payable, long-term debt, and preparation of the county's financial statements. And whereas Diana Wimpel's integrity, care, and kindness and dedication to Lassen County will be missed, a new journey is about to begin. Embark on it with a deep breath. Make sure you enjoy it all. Happy retirement, Diana. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lassen that Diana Wimpel be commended for 17 years, three months' service to Lassen County, and that the Board of Supervisors wishes her well for many years to come. So now we just have to adopt those codes, huh?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Public comment? Can't forget that part. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Proclamation carries. Normally, this is the part where we hand it over, but I think at first has, now that I've leaned all over this thing, we should probably clean it off and make sure we don't hand over. We don't want any of that virus for her retirement. All right, but thank you, Diana. All right. Shall we move on to the information and consent calendar?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to H1, adoption of resolution, the proclamation of local emergency by the Director of Emergency Services within the meaning of Lassen County Code, Chapter 11.14.
I'm moving.
Wait a moment, sorry, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may be aware, those authorized have declared the local state of emergency regarding to the COVID-19 issue. Sheriff Braden and Emergency Chief Rojas are in the audience. They probably have comments. One thing I do want to technically ask the board to do is to add to this resolution some verbiage that I'll read into it. And it deals with the Emergency Operations Center. As you know, it is open at the Community College. Community College has offered and Emergency Operations has accepted some significant assistance from them, both in terms of facility and staffing. And so that's what this item is intended to address in the event that there's a method by which they can recover costs for that offer. We'll include that in the resolution. So if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'll read that change into the record.
Please give.
Okay, so what we'd like to add as a separate whereas, and I'll just begin. Whereas on March 18, 2020, Lassen County Office of Emergency Services has tasked Lassen Community College with emergency services support inclusive of staffing, facilities, and hosting the Lassen County Emergency Operations Center.
Any public comment on this matter?
Good morning. My name is Silas Ross, Emergency Services Chief for Lassen County. Just a quick update, the EOC is being staffed out as needed and supporting the public health department in anything that they require to progress through these uncertain and new circumstances that we're dealing with that are unusual to not only the world, but specifically to our county and the challenges we're facing. I just want to make sure that you know that we're working diligently and appropriately in response to this, even though it hasn't made it to our county yet. We're working very closely with public health, who has put in numerous hours to ensure that the plans and protocols are in place to ensure that if it gets here, we respond appropriately, to maintain the safety of our community. And I would like to especially thank Dr. Robertson and his staff at the Community College because they've been extremely important to the EOC in providing staff and resources that we otherwise would not have. And with that, are there any questions you might have for me that I can answer?
Are these agents in the dorm rooms ready for extra beds if the party gets bad?
I don't think we want to necessarily publicly address right now where that is. We have looked at multiple options for alternate care site facilities, isolation facilities, and some of the limiting factors in that are the guidelines the CDP is putting out for isolation facilities and what the requirements may be for that. But we have a plan for that, and it continues to develop as the situation changes.
Chris? Is there anything else that you guys need right now in terms of equipment or supplies or things like that?
I think we're doing well. We have a process for obtaining supplies right now. There, as you know, there's a worldwide shortage of certain PPP. Right now, we're in a pretty good spot. Public health has planned for events like this. And I think for the short term, we're looking very good. And we have a plan in place for the long term to ensure that we have everything that we need. We also have been talking with Assemblywoman Dally's office, her staff, and then understanding what our needs are. We pay with Richard on a regular basis. And we are taking the steps necessary that we believe are necessary to ensure that we have everything we need for the long term.
As of right now, there's zero cases, right?
Correct. And I can, I'll speak to that briefly. There are zero cases, and if you guys have been noticing on the Lassencares.org website, that is, we try to keep that in real time, so we're constantly updating that. And the numbers don't change all the time because there's no new numbers, but we try to change the time and the date on there so we know that that information is fresh. Speak briefly to the reason why there's some of those outstanding, that continue to be outstanding, they're not giving results on. Some of those samples were taken from asymptomatic patients, patients that didn't have any symptoms that would be an indication of the COVID-19. They were sampled because of the circumstances surrounding where they may have traveled to, where they came from, and who they were in contact with. And as such, the labs triage those samples based on the importance of getting them tested. So asymptomatic patients generally are going to be put at the bottom of that list, and they'll be tested as needed. But obviously, as new samples come in from patients exhibiting symptoms, those continue to get pushed to the top. So we may not see results from some of those back soon, but we will see them. And the other thing to remember is the 14-day self-isolation. All those individuals who have outstanding tests have been advised to self-isolate. They're being checked on daily, a couple times a day to ensure that they don't need anything. We're maintaining, we're continuing to impart upon the importance of the self-isolation. And after that 14 days, if they don't develop any symptoms, even if their results aren't back, they are most likely not infected with the COVID-19.
Were you guys working with CRU yet? Because they're still going.
They are still going. I have spoke with, I don't remember his name, Doug?
Doug Gill.
Yeah. I've had an email conversation with Doug. I know he's been in close contact with the health department. And we'll continue to reach out with those cooperators and ensure that they're giving the information they're needing.
The importance of our employees has never been more shown than during emergencies or during moments like this. I think I already know the answer to this, but we're making sure that all of our employees practice self-care and aren't working themselves too hard during those moments.
I think there's, I think the county, from the direction of the county's administrative staff, has given clear direction that that is very important to them. We're taking the steps necessarily internally within our EOC to ensure that everyone's given a rest and the appropriate care needed to maintain. Obviously, I think we all know this isn't going to be done tomorrow and probably won't be done next week or maybe in the next month. And we're working on a staffing plan that will ensure that we have employees available to us until we're not needed anymore. And that may be June, and that may be April 30. I don't know that answer.
And that applies to yourself, too. You're taking good self-care.
We're doing the best we can. We have a succession plan in place. We've been keeping Chief Eric Ewing and Chief Mark Roffesberger, who got his position prior to me. They're continually being briefed to know the situation in case we need to bring them in. And so there is no interruption in the service from the Emergency Services Department.
And you guys are also working with the three prisons, two states, a federal prison?
We've had close contact with the prisons. We have direct access to both of our state prisons. We had a little bit of trouble contacting and coordinating with FCI Earlone. We continue to try to make that connection. And I hope here shortly that we can burn that up, make sure we have a direct line into FCI Earlone as well.
Any other questions?
Just thank you for your, thank you service.
Thank you.
Good job, Silas.
Any other public comment on this matter? I'll bring it back to the board then.
I did want to mention, since we're doing this emergency proclamation, that I talked to Barbara long ago on Sunday, and the Lassen Community Social Services started reaching out to people in their database that are over 65 yesterday. And so they're going to keep in close contact with those folks and make sure they're all doing well, just to see if they had any specific needs. So that, you know, kudos to our departments for doing that. Something special that I'm not sure I've heard in other counties yet, but make it personal phone calls is probably the best.
There's nothing else, and I'm looking for adoption of the resolution.
So moved.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any public?
Does that motion and second, does that include the burden of security?
It was read.
It was read.
All right, well then I'm going to go ahead and call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, or resolution, I should say. I'm going to move to H2, which is adoption of resolution ratifying the Declaration of Local Health Emergency by the County Health Officer, Dr. Kenneth Korver, within the meaning of the Health and Safety Code.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll take this item up. The County Health Officer, Dr. Korver, has issued a declaration of local emergency and it requires ratification by this board. A couple of comments about that. Dr. Korver has operated historically as the health officer for the entire county, inclusive of the incorporated area of the city of Susanville. And that's continuing in this resolution. The city council tomorrow on their agenda is also adopting a resolution to clarify if there is any doubt that Dr. Korver is the health officer both within the city and in the unincorporated area of the county.
Okay, I'm looking for public comment on this one first then? Or do I have any other staff report? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Comment?
No, no question. How long does this speak for, Richard?
I'm not sure that I'm going to give you a clear answer to that. I think it's in place until the emergency ends and the health officer so indicates. But Silas may have another comment on that.
I can't speak for a public health declaration. I think you'll follow the emergency declaration that just has to be revisited by the board no longer than 60 days. So it's in place until we declare not an emergency, but it has to be revisited every 60 days minimum.
Any other question? Then I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution.
I have a clarification question. So in our packet for H2, there was a declaration number, and what was just passed out was a resolution number. Which one or both do we do?
Sure, so the health officer adopted a proclamation with the number, I think, of 202001. That's a separate document from the ratification, which will be the resolution. And I'm not sure if the clerks have signed that number yet.
Got it.
So I have a motion and a second. I just want to say that both of the, this sort of emergency is very trying. When you have a fire or an earthquake, something that you can grapple with, those moments are easier to see the pathway forward. I appreciate the effort of the sheriff, local law enforcement, first responders, and then our medical community, because this one requires a fidelity and a discipline that's different than some of the others. And so not only am I asking that all of us in this room follow through, but I'm asking that our community as a whole continue to be patient and to practice discipline and do what there needs to be done and what there's called in this case, even though that doesn't always come easy to Lassen County. So with that.
And I have one more comment. I'd just like to thank Dr. Korver, too, because I'm sure that he's been woken up in the middle of the night, and during many parts of the day, you know, and so he has to make difficult decisions as well. So I'd like to thank him for that.
On that note, I'll go ahead and call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. H3, Sheriff's Department, Adult Pretrial Electronic Monitoring Program. Sheriff Braden?
All right, good morning, Chairman, Board Supervisors. So before I get to that, you know, we're going for a second off of work, but we said. So like Supervisor Gallagher made a comment about the social services making phone calls. And there's a lot of proactive work happening right now. There's a lot of good work occurring. And that's in the Emergency Operations Center. Obviously, Silas and support personnel we gave from Cal Fire, as well as the college have been extremely helpful. And what we're all trying to do is work with all these people that are doing good work in the community right now. Obviously, the schools, the one-stops, the senior centers, public health, obviously, they're leading. They're doing a great job. They have a lot of work to do. Food pantries, medical providers, there are a lot of people working together in our communities right now. And some of the primary goals we have, as well as, you know, obviously, our partner agencies, police departments, the fire agencies. And what we're really trying to do is make sure that we're prepared. You know, make sure that we're doing what we can as far as social distancing and the guidelines and protecting the community, as well as making sure we have critical plans in place. We're also compiling information on those services that are available and trying to get that out to people. Obviously, the Lassencares website is a real effort to try to do that, getting information from all those providers, making it readily available to the public. And also really working hard to work with all those critical agencies on, you know, supplies, long-term need for supplies, medical providers, first responders, and the fire agencies, everybody, just trying to make work. So we're trying to make an effort there, too. We've had a lot of work, obviously, the last couple of weeks. And, you know, in my office, we've taken a lot of, we've developed a lot of plans. We've implemented some plans and some changes. And what I do, the CDP oriented today, is part of that. So the jail, so information from state public health as well as local public health. Obviously, the jail, it's an area where it's very high risk because it's an densely populated area. It's hard to maintain the standards. We try to do what we can as far as social distancing goes in the jail, too. Because no matter what, we have employees going in and out each day. We have, you know, we're still booking people. Bookings are down. But still, there's still some exchange and movement in and out of that jail. People in that confined environment, a lot of those people do have other health conditions, too, that make them particularly vulnerable, as well as the density of the population. So we've been taking efforts to try to reduce the population to some degree. Part of it is to help me and my people manage that population. And we do have people infected. We need space for quarantine. And the other thing we don't want to do is, we don't want to overload our local medical system. And if we have a lot of people who come sick in that jail, you know, we don't want to have to move them to the hospital and take up those critical beds. So it's really important that we do make every effort to try to keep it from getting into the jail. So we're screening employees right now every day as they go to work. We're screening the few people who are still permitted to come into the jail. We've cut off all visiting except for legal visits. And even the attorneys are getting screened before they come in, and they're visiting through the glass. Our partner agencies, we've reduced the number of bookings. If there's a way to issue citations and keep permitting fewer people to the jail, we're making those efforts. But still, we still want more tools available. Because there are, we've surveyed the whole jail population, and there are about 25 people in the jail, about the 90 people that are in the jail right now. There are about 25 who are in there for very serious crimes, childless, rape, murder, attempted murder, you know, similar cases. And those particular ones, you know, obviously, they need to stay in jail. And we need to keep them healthy so we don't have to move those people to the hospital, because that's going to be really labor-intensive. And there are only a few infested detritium bits in the hospital. So ultimately, that's, I mean, that's the ultimate goal, is making sure we can safely house those most serious offenders and try to keep them from impacting the justice system, as well as, you know, our staff. We've got to have staff to operate the jail. So we're doing everything we can to keep our staff from getting infected and having that affect the jail operation. So that is the CDP for you. So we, in 2011, realignment started. We started an electronic monitoring program. And electronic monitoring is really advanced now. It's not like home detention where you have a device and you get a certain distance from it. It's all GPS-operated. And so we can allow people, like, we can put fences. Well, we put a fence around the residents during certain hours. If they have a job, allow them to go to work, be at the work site at certain hours. If they're, if they have a known victim, we can put a fence around victims within a certain distance of the victim's residence, place of work. So if they go within that distance, we give an alarm. So it's really advanced. And also, if they have issues with alcoholism or other issues that contribute to their criminal conduct, we have a, it's like an alcohol detector that has facial recognition software, and they can blow in it a couple times a day just to verify they're not drinking and so on. So it's really advanced. We've been using it for sentenced inmates, real low-level sentenced inmates, and it's been really successful. In some of those cases where it's a low-level crime, it places restrictions on them. But it does allow some of those people, if they have employment or are being fully employed, it allows them to keep a job. It also serves us as a sentence on restricting their movements and so on. So what we're asking to do today is, we haven't operated a pretrial program, but I have an interest in adopting a pretrial program. I don't know how much, we're going to use it, but it's really strict. It's misdemeanors who are pretrial and who have served a minimum of 30 days in custody. Right now, looking at our population, there are only a few that meet that criteria. But it does offer us additional flexibility moving forward in managing our inmate population. So that's why I put it on the agenda. I've attached draft policy, which is, it's basically the existing policy we've had for sentenced offenders, and we just added a section particular to pretrial. So what I'm requesting that you do today is approve the pretrial electronic monitoring and the rules that I've attached.
Question?
I've got one question, David. Who determines the ability to pay off? Is that your ability, or is that the judge?
No, Office of Recovery and Reimbursement. They do, they do the assessment on all, I think that's correct, right? They do the assessment on, related to all offender fees. And they have some kind of formula they use to make that determination. And what we have been doing is the money that we've been using to pay for the indigents, we've been using some of the realignment money that came from the state. So it's not local gym fund money. We've been using that money to control that population or pay for the services.
Do you have that money in the account, Phil? I wish you had anticipated this to leave, I don't know.
I mean, right now, it's less than $10,000 a year we're paying for all the. And at any one point in time, we probably have between three and five on electronic monitoring. The good thing, too, is it has had some flexibility. There are some people who, you know, commit low-level crimes over and over because of drug addiction and other things, and that's one tool that's been valuable, too. We've been able to put people in treatment programs while they're also on ankle monitor. And we've had some really good success, too. Those guys get, they learn how to, you know, avoid those things that lead toward the drug use and lead towards them landing in jail and, so. There have been some other benefits associated with it, also.
How many monitors do you have?
Well, we ordered a bunch. I think we have like 80 right now. Just that's worst-case scenario. We're going to end up sending some of those back. I think the most will end up, I mean, depends on how things go. I just want plans in place in case things go really bad, so we have more options available.
Chris?
And the $5.43 a day is a heck of a lot cheaper than keeping them in jail, right?
Yeah.
What's your average cost to keep an inmate in jail?
I think the rate we charge just is around 80-something. It's more than that, but I think it's like 84 or maybe 78, I'm not sure. But the daily jail rate is higher than that. that. There's just so many costs now between the medical cost and everything else. But the hard part is a lot of those are fixed costs. No matter how many inmates you have, you know, the costs, you know, the money being expended to operate the jail doesn't drop off that much associated with, in the population, other than prescriptions and some of the medical visits, hospital visits, and so on.
So potentially, in the long run, this could save some money.
Potentially. Plus, I mean, the way it's going is, I'm like at the pretrial, the bail reform bill that's going to be on the ballot November, depending on the outcome of that. I mean, people are, they're moving to towards more pretrial options outside of, you know, bail or custody. And so it's just something that's been on our to-do list. We just haven't done until now.
Any other questions?
Any public comment?
Oh, sorry, Chris.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right. Now we'll see if there's any other public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here. I got a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Sheriff Brown. Richard, do you have any information for the Board of Supervisors?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? If we could take up the item that we added to the agenda.
Of course.
Yes, thank you. And I think we'll identify that as item H4, five, H5. And what you have is a resolution in front of you that I'm recommending that you adopt. In short, the county code dictates office hours for, that county officers are required to maintain in their offices. With the issues at hand, several offices have modified their method of operation. All offices remain open, but they're, in some cases, it's appropriate to limit or eliminate public content or contact. And so the resolution essentially authorizes modified operations for county departments for the duration of the emergency. And that's what I'm recommending that we adopt. We've also compiled, attached to this, we've compiled a list of those modifications by department, which was issued in a press release so that the public can determine, you know, how best to contact various departments. And so that's the purpose of the resolution. It's my recommendation to adopt it.
Questions? Chris?
Richard, is there a way we can come back after this is done and modify the county policy so that during any emergency, you have the ability to do this without coming to the board?
Yes, and I recommend that.
Okay.
All right. Well, then, public comment? Without that? All right. I'll bring it back here. I'm looking for a motion to adopt.
I would move to adopt, I would, H5, the emergency, I would just add it, resolution number...
20-016.
I have a motion. Looking for a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Well, with that, now, do you have any information for it, Richard?
Just a couple things, and I'll be real brief. Chief Rojas alluded to the fact that, referred to a question of the board about our, how we're dealing with employees and the concern for the employees. And I just want to reiterate that our employees, the county employees have all, without exception, responded positively towards dealing with this emergency that we're in. And I'll come forward. And I've expressed to them on behalf of the board how important it is that we protect and, you know, maintain that workforce. We're going to be working through several additional policy measures to adopt as we move forward in the next couple of weeks, pretty promptly, that are going to directly deal with that. In the meantime, we're dealing with, as there are issues with employees, we're dealing with those individually within existing policy. And just wanted to mention that to the board. Also, thanks for indulging us in this new meeting format. We will probably continue this if the circumstances dictate future meetings, which may mean that our agendas are emergency, or I'm sorry, special meetings rather than regular meetings, but because we'll be having them in a different location. I've also offered to the city of Susanville to use this facility, and they plan on using this for their public meetings as well.
Chairman?
And yes, wanted to specifically thank Jeremy Cuso at SusanvilleStuff.com. We invited them yesterday to come and stream these meetings and make them available on their media for the public's consumption, maybe not live, but shortly thereafter. Really appreciate that, that they're willing to do that, at least for now. And especially on short notice, some thanks to SusanvilleStuff.com.
Thank you, Jeremy. You have a service I know that will be much appreciated by a lot of people that are paying attention.
Glad to be there.
And we've already noticed over the weekend that the churches happened to go to a different format. Jeremy stepped up, and he added links to each one of the services throughout the city, I think, and maybe even the county for those services. So we appreciated that help as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, reviewing the agenda, I think we passed over board reports by board members.
Well, I did note that, but it was after 10:00 a.m. on the agenda. But yes, if there is a member of the board that has an item they wish to bring up, here's your moment. And Chris?
I have a couple of things. I just want to thank everyone who has been sheltering in place, the businesses that have closed, and all those kind of things that have happened throughout the county, because I think it's really going to make a difference. And we know it's a hardship for those folks and for the families and for all the schools to be closed. And we just thank you for not spreading this, as Silas said earlier. We have no cases yet. I'm sure there, at some point, we probably will. But if we can keep that down to as few as possible, that'd be great for our community. The other thing is, I'm frustrated by seeing gas prices in the city. Every time, you know, a barrel of oil goes to $50 or $60, immediately our gas prices go up. Well, now our gas, the barrel price is in the 20s, and we don't see our gas prices still go down. Hamilton Branch, I saw yesterday, has $2.99 gas, and today in Susanville, it's still $3.39. So I think that's frustrating, especially during these times when, you know, people could use a little extra money and not be charged that. So I'd encourage the station owners in Susanville to look at lowering their prices during this time as well.
Tom? Would you have any? All right. Jack?
No.
Aaron?
I would just like to say thank you to the gym for setting this up for, along for us, but we'll do it for the city, too. And we need to have these things for the public going forward. So I just a special thank you to them. Thank you to the dean, and Silas, and everybody else who's making these contracts. And Susanville Stuff, thank you guys for all the hard work you're doing. We appreciate that. Just encourage your way to stay safe and be diligent as the city was trying to.
Well, what I wanted to talk about, our agenda is light for this one because staff is working on the problems that we saw on this agenda. But in April, I think we need to have a discussion. I was talking with the treasurer, tax collector. While the revenue collections were at a pretty good clip right now, she seems to identify June as an area where we might start to see some of those sharp falls from our revenue sources. And so a discussion in April might be how we could find new revenue sources. So I'd like to have that on the agenda for next month at some point, if staff is able to do, you know, like I said, the Board of Supervisors could come up with some ideas. Beyond that, I believe we are at the end of our meeting. So adjourned.